Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coth.
President.
Mr. Mott.
President.
Ms. Paul Strini.
President.
Mr. Robinson.
President.
All right, can you please raise your pledge of allegiance? Okay, so. Do we have any un-signed up to speak this evening?
No sir.
Okay. All right, so now we have proclamation, again I apologize for getting that all together here. We had a last minute call up on the court sheets under the weather, so we're trying to get our energy together. So tonight, as some of you may have known, the Okay, sorry, let's do that. So before you, you have the meeting minutes for December 2nd, or December 1st, 2022, please review them at this time.
Yeah.
If there's no changes to be made to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Motion passed six zero. Tonight, as you guys may have seen, the Speedy Mart gas station in town is closing after many years of operation. We thought it would be prudent to recognize the Peterson family tonight and tomorrow, we'd like to make a proclamation that it's Peterson Family Day within the village due to all of the contributions that Mr. Peterson and his family have made to our village over the years. And before that, I've asked Mr. Peterson and his family to join us tonight. We're happy that you're here. We really appreciate all of your efforts over the years and all the contributions that you've given, festivals and different organizations and your guidance in our village over the years. So I'll read this proclamation this evening. Whereas the Peterson family has sold the, sold fuel at the Hampshire Speedy Mart location for over 50 years, starting first as a standalone gas station, full-service gas station in the 70s and later becoming one of Northern Illinois's first convenience stores. And whereas the Peterson family having owned, having owned a business and always putting the community first, engaging in the community and by running the annual corn boil for over 30 years since it was the Coon Creek Country Days corn boil, by running the Burlington Parade for over 25 years and by actively participating in chambers of commerce, business councils, planning boards, VFW, scouts, Lions Clubs, and rural societies and fire departments for over combined 100 years. The Peterson family plans to continue supporting this community as a way of showing thanks for supporting many of their employees and businesses. And after three generations of working in the family business, along with many of the local workers which were considered families as well. Therefore, I, therefore now it be resolved by me, village president Mike Reed, on behalf of the Village of Hampshire, that tomorrow, December 16, 2022, shall be claimed as Peterson Family Day in recognition of the family business success and strong participation in the community. The Village of Hampshire further wishes the Peterson family very well in their endeavors as they move forward in the future. And so we will have this printed off and signed for you and we will deliver tomorrow to your building on State Street. Is there anything anybody would like to add this evening? Mr. Peterson, you're welcome to speak.
My family. I'm represented here this evening with my sister and her husband. And my daughter, Carly, and my other daughter, Christine. We are honored for this proclamation. But we are just one family of Petersons that have done business in Hampshire over the years. My grandfather, Frederick Peterson, ran Peterson Insurance Agency here in Hampshire for many years. His brother, Herman Peterson, ran the Ford Garage and sold Ford and Mercury automobiles. Son, ran Peterson Insurance Agency after my grandfather retired. My father worked here in Hampshire all his life. He was a electrician. Maybe the main electrician for JB Interim, Canney Company and the Borden Company here in Hampshire. We operated the local feed mills selling these for livestock and we had a propane business with customers in four surrounding counties. And this is a a very nice honor to receive. Thank you.
Really appreciate everyone coming tonight. Like I said, we will have this signed for you and then we'll get it over to you tomorrow morning at your place on State Street, for sure. I think we should try to get a family photo if that's okay. Do you think?
Yeah, let's do it.
Can you guys, would you mind standing by our H and take a photo?
It's a Peterson family.
That'd be good right there, last stand right in front of the counter, please, thanks. Is that a hat? It's a good looking hat, at least turn to me if that is. Yeah, it's my head. Three, two, one.
Can we get one with the mayor too?
I'm gonna read your vote.
Please.
Okay, three, two, one. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you.
I know.
And like all these votes, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to, because it's gonna be a long one. Thank you all for coming. Okay. Hot off the presses, like literally. Yeah, we can do it. All right, so next for more fun. We have Ms. Carly Mayer here to be sworn in. Let's see here, we have everything we need? We're good? Yes. Okay, so a little change of events. In our chief man will be doing the swearing in this evening, as he's done the officer swearing in before and our deputy clerk is not. So here's our, here's our little bio, where's Ms. Mayer, there she is. She's here with her, or their family, which she introduced here shortly, but I'll read a little bit about her. You correct me if I say anything incorrectly. Carly Mayer grew up in Hampshire, she graduated from Hampshire High School, then attended Loyola University in Chicago, graduated in 2014 with a bachelor of science degree in criminology with a minor in psychology. Ms. Mayer started her criminal justice career as a youth counselor at NIU as a residential treatment facility for children and young adults with mental illness and other disorders. In 2017, she left while actively, left there to actively pursue a career in law enforcement. While pursuing her career, she worked for Levinson Locations in Chicago as the lead locations coordinator where she coordinated video production projects at high volumes throughout the Chicago land area. In 2019, Ms. Mayer accepted a position to work with the Calves County Court Services where she worked for three and a half years as a juvenile probation officer, pre-trial officer, and ultimately an adult probation officer. After leaving court services, Ms. Mayer worked remotely for Marquee Health of Chicago as a member experienced specialist. Ms. Mayer currently resides at Sycamore with her five-year-old daughter Eleanor. Ms. Mayer is excited to return to the Hampshire community and to serve with the Hampshire Police Department. Did I get it right? Okay. All right, let's do things a little bit different. Who do you have with you tonight?
I have my whole family here, so I have my mother, my two sisters, my daughter Eleanor, my father over here with the camera. And then my best friend.
You're right.
That's a support.
Okay, awesome. All right, so Chief Pan's gonna, Chief Pan's gonna swear you in this evening and then whoever you would like to we need one volunteer.
On my way.
She was like, what happened? Yeah, I'm gonna tumble. What's the pin like?
Sorry, don't be too nervous, if you drop it, we'll just take another photo. Okay. Are you ready to run in? Hi.
Hi Carly.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state alone.
And the Constitution of the state alone.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer of the Village of Hampshire.
The duties of a police officer of the Village of Hampshire.
According to the best of my book. Awesome. Okay, now you can, now you can do the pen. Guys, get up and take photos if you want. Congrats. You come at the square. Okay, yeah, sure.
You might as well do one with all you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like, I would like to have all the officers out there.
Oh, yeah. And then if you want to do a family photo or something, you're welcome. Absolutely. Okay, three, two, one. Got it?
They got a Christmas card.
They good look. You want to give a quick, favorite one?
Thanks so much.
You want to do a quick thing?
Yeah. No, no, it's not quite exciting.
Okay, three, two, one. Got it? Three, two, one. Party more than your buddy. Congratulations, kid. Yeah, I know. I'm sorry about ruining your picture, but it's bigger. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you. Wait a minute.
We didn't ever get the first.
No, we just did that. Jump in front of the grand? Here we go. So number, number eight here, we've got a bunch of public hearings. So let's, let's get started with that. So we have a public hearing for the SSA, well, let's see, for the annual tax levy. So should I, do I need a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion to close our meeting temporarily.
Okay. Can I have that then?
No.
No.
You're not closing, you're not closing the board. Board is holding the public hearing.
So I just need a motion to open the public hearing? I'll need a motion to close that one down. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Questions, comments? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you bow roll please?
Yeah, really.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly. All right. Ms. Coth. Hi. Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson. Hi. Motion passed. Okay, public hearing is now open.
Welcome. I just have a few slides to go over with you, you do have a copy of the presentation at your desk. As we said, have opposite questions. So first of all, I just wanted to show you that property taxes are a significant portion of the village's general fund revenues. In fact, it's 23.4% of our revenue. Over the last year, if you were to look at this graph at the same time last year when we were doing this presentation, the state shared revenues were actually a smaller piece of the pie. They're much greater this year simply because the census has been certified and the village has a lot more population and therefore additional state shared revenues, especially in the form of income taxes, which is based on a per capita basis. On the next slide is one of our favorites, it talks about where your taxes go. So for every dollar you pay in property taxes as a owner occupied resident of a home in Hampshire, 5.8 cents of every dollar come to the village. The other large piece, of course, is the school district. On the next slide. Sorry, I forgot to, I forgot to place the dollar up there. The next slide just speaks about PTEL. We're going to be asking for a dollar amount greater this, this evening than we actually expect to receive. For the first time since the inception of the property tax extension limitation law, the village has officially been PTEL, meaning this is the first time that the CIP index was greater than five, so we will be limited to a 5% increase in property taxes. Plus the construction. There are five components of the, the actual calculation of a levy, the CPI, a multiplier, RDAV, the prior year extension, and new construction. If there were only two factors in the calculation, you would take the 2021 extension amount. Those were the property taxes that were paid to the village in 2022. That amount was 1,193,139. So we would be limited to the lesser of 5% for the CPI index, which was 7% per calendar year 2021. So 2021 CPI determines what we can levy for 2022, which will then be collected in 2023. And as in the years past, our multiplier is one, so therefore the maximum we could have collected at 5% would be 1,257,666. However, the village did experience new construction, so new homes, new businesses, new buildings that were constructed in the village, we actually expect to collect approximately $24,500 more. This is based on the estimated new construction value that has been added to the property insurance. So this year's levy request is for 8.5% over last year's extension. So the village is asking for $1,294,500. However, we expect, based on the new property additions and the limitations that will be applied, we're expecting about $1,277,300. The next slide kind of shows how we came to that 8.5% and how it differs from the last year. So the arrow shows you the increases or decreases, excuse me, in the areas where the village is allowed to tax. So a corporate tax, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, police protection for audit purposes, for liability insurance payment purposes, and for social security. But probably the most important thing to you would be what happens to my tax bill. So in 2021, after the PTEL calculation was calculated by the county clerk, the village's combined tax rate was 0.471349. With the expected amount of growth in the village and the PTEL calculation, I expect the tax rate to go down to approximately 0.4627, thereby decreasing a $300,000 fair market value home by 8,000.
There's a lot of conversation online that people see this thing, their property tax is up 8.5%. This, I think, is a really important chart that shows actually your property tax is going down.
So this assumes that, again, the fair market value stays the same from year to year. You know, I don't know whether or not that's going to go up for your individual homes. And then, again, my calculation fully expect the rate to go down, you know, I don't want to make it sound like I'm hedging or something, you know. But this, this calculation is based on estimated EAV, you know, that was provided in the fall.
So just to clear it, I since we're on video here too. Sure. Is that the additional homes that are coming into the village are also helping them to reduce the amount of property taxes that people are having to pay.
That's correct. To the village. Right, so the property tax, the calculation is pretty conglutant, to be perfectly honest. But it involves the current EAV, the value of the new property, and then it's done as a percentage basis and then the limitation applied. So absolutely, the new property is what allows us to get a little bit extra, but based on the calculation, the rate to actually.
And then by increasing that to be 8. whatever, so you said, this one, is it 8.5%?
8.5%.
So by raising that, that also allows us to capture a lot more of the value of the new construction.
Exactly, there's, there's leeway in there, right? Because the EAV does change, the final EAV will not be issued until the spring, usually in the month of March. So in the spring. So we can't really make 100% accurate calculation today, so we do always ask for more so that we make sure that we do capture the problem all about.
Because if we don't ask for it, then we lose it and can't ask for it later.
Exactly, and you can't make it up next year because the whole calculation is based on last year's extension. So if you've missed something in the extension, then you miss it forever. Thank you for that. We'll definitely put some additional information about property taxes on the website and then if you'd like, I can make sure that this chart is posted.
So just so the board is aware, you haven't seen our website in a while. The staff has really worked hard to put transparency center together, really delineating for the residents, this is not speaking ill of, of any of the residents, but in terms that everybody can understand what percentage of your dollar goes where and what taxes the village imposes and why and that kind of thing. And they are, are going to be posting more information about what exactly a levy is and why we go out and what it means when it gets extended and that kind of stuff. So that's going to be included in our transparency center in the next couple of weeks.
I think this chart, I mean, that would be very helpful, because this is one of the best ones that I think explains what's in it for me or how does this affect me as a homeowner and as a resident? Because the P, like you said, PTEL can be very complicated, understanding CPI and the calculations and overall EAV, that can be very complicated. What I care about is how does this affect? And while we can't control what the township assessor assesses your home at, what we can show is what the combined tax rate will be on whatever that assessed value is. That's, this makes that easy to understand.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Oh wait, do you want me to grant?
Yeah, just one more. My pennies, so again, only 6 cents of every dollar actually comes to the village. Any questions?
Any other questions at the public hearing for the tax lighting? I will entertain a motion to close the levy for the, or the public hearing for the tax lighting screen.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Can I have a roll call vote please, Mr. Deputy Clerk? Mr. Mott. Hi. Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson. Hi. Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth. Motion passed six zero. Hey, can I have a motion to open the public hearing for the tax, for the levy of SSA number seven, please?
Second.
Questions, comments? Deputy Clerk? Mr. Coth. Hi. Ms. Mott. Hi. Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson. Hi. Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly. All right. Motion passed six zero. Okay, welcome to the public hearing for the levy for SSA number seven proposal for an increase of over 5% compared to prior year. Welcome, Ms. Lyons.
Yes, so just like the corporate levy, village has to have a public hearing for the purpose of hearing any type of request that's over 5%. have a public hearing for the purpose of hearing any type of request that's over five percent. The notification difference is, is different, excuse me. Um, we had to publish, uh, our proposed levy in the newspaper for the corporate levy. In the case of the special service area, the only requirements are to, um, uh, follow the Open Meetings Act. So, um, so most provided forty-eight hours in advance, although we did meet about this at the last meeting. Um, so with respect to special service area number seven, this encompasses the Hampshire Hills subdivision. Uh, there are three detention areas totaling sixteen acres there. One point nine seven acres, um, of property are mowed by the Public Works Department. And there are seventy-two parcels included in this special service area, uh, that include, excludes the exempt parcel properties, um, which for sure belong to the village. So the next graphic is simply, um, a map of the area showing, um, the ponds and then there's some additional areas that are, um, most.
Any questions for Ms. Lyons about SSA number seven?
Um, I got a couple more, a couple more slides.
Okay, sure.
Also, just to let you know what's been done, um, selective machine and hand clearing of invasive brush and small trees um, through the buffer area and, uh, the detention contention. The stormwater facilities, um, were burned this week. So, um, that's been done. And then the final graphic kind of shows where we were. So as you know, um, this special service area had not received any maintenance um, until fiscal year twenty-one during my entire part of tenure. So there is a lot of catch-up to do. So we're starting, we started fiscal year twenty-three with a negative fund balance. Um, we raised the property taxes a giant amount last year. Um, yielding, uh, we requested seven thousand, five hundred dollars. We got seven thousand, four ninety-four. All the property taxes are in at the present time. Um, we expect the estimated fiscal year expenses this year to, um, exceed fifteen thousand dollars, which puts us in the hole a great deal, but we're, um, we're trying to build out or dig out of that hole and therefore request, um, a property tax levy of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars this year. Now, there's no PTEL on, um, special service areas. Um, we just cannot exceed the maximum amount that is stated in the special service area, um, ordinance that was created, um, in this case back maybe in about ninety-seven. I guess.
In nineteen ninety-two.
Yes. Um, so, uh, if there's any questions, I would entertain.
Is there a breakdown, uh, per household? How much, uh, people's?
So, um, I will refer to page um, twenty-one of the, um, board packet. Sorry, um, that's not in, not included in here. So at twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, um, this was done at, I don't know why it was inconsistent, but a, at a, uh, fair market value, um, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this was the a hundred and eighteen dollars, um, to a resident.
Again, you spoke to length about this last, last meeting about the fact that we're going to try to get out of the hole and we're going to try to take some of the maintenance on our own, so it's part of a long-range plan. The, um, trend that we're seeing of upward assessments eventually should slow once we catch up from where we were to where we're going, which is have staff kind of add some of this and not let it get to this point in the future.
We've definitely challenged Public Works to, um, to take out some trainings, so, um.
Any other questions about SSA number seven? I was just made aware that I don't need to call roll call vote because we're all here. So, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing for SSA number seven.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, I have closed the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion to go into public hearing for SSA number ten.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye? All opposed? Okay, we're all in, uh, this wonderful public hearing. Welcome, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you. Um, special service area number ten, um, encompasses the White Oak Pond subdivision. There are four retention areas totaling thirty-three point three five acres, two point five five acres of which are mowed. There are one hundred and seventy-three parcels in that subdivision, excluding the exempt property. Uh, the next graphic is a picture of the maps, or, excuse me, of the ponds, maybe?
Can I ask about the exempt properties?
Yeah, so the village owns the, um, the retention areas. Um, and then if there were an individual subdivision that is exempt from property taxes, um, oftentimes, it, you know, could include that the home is owned by a not-for-profit organization, um, and they're. Yeah, church, there you go. Um, so I just quantified the total number of properties, but yes, the village does own, um, thirty-three point eight five acres in there, so that would be exempt from property taxes. So there are a hundred and seventy-three taxable parcels.
Would you like the maps?
Yes. Um, it's kind of counterintuitive, but we will be renumbering the units because one, two, three, eight doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but they kind of combine the whole Tuscan Woods and Hampshire Highlands to get sequential. I'm sure why. Okay, so the work that's been done in this subdivision, um, again, some machine and hand clearing, um, it's had extensive herbicide treatments and, um, unit two was burned just this fall.
And, and I will say that unit two was burned twice, because the first time they burned was horrible. I mean, they called Chad, Chad had to come back and burn it proper. So you know.
There was a lot of humidity, I think, the first day that they tried to do it.
I sat and watched them. No, it wasn't.
Oh.
I sat and watched them. They put a little, started a fire that big and they're shooting the breeze and they, no.
Okay.
They came back the next day, the weather was identical and they had to re-burn, because it wasn't done properly.
Toby's like our own IT.
Yeah, that's right. You know, you have to be your own best advocate, right? So, absolutely. Um, okay, so special service area, uh, number ten, uh, had a negative fund balance of eight thousand, eight twenty-four. Uh, the tax collections this year were just over, um, eight, thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars with estimated expenses of seventeen thousand, five. So, um, while we end up more in the hole than we started, we are trying to, you know, extend the, um, lessen the burden to the property tax owners while eventually making progress. And while it doesn't look like we're making progress this year, if you look to the future, once we do, um, this machine clearing um, and burning regularly, it will eventually not require hand and machine clearing, which is really, really expensive. So we're asking, um, for special service area number ten, sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And, um, if, uh, a homeowner had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar owner occupied home, this would equate to approximately ninety-two dollars on, on their property.
Career.
Any other questions, too? Uh, the person who may do this is for Trustee Coe, because you know the area you're all in. Unit eight, does that go into Silas Park? That map, it looks like it was right up to the path.
Unit eight. Yes, it's.
It splits it.
Um, there's a, that's a wetland area. It's on the east side of, um, the tennis courts at the, um, park district. Yeah, there's a wooded area between White Oak and the tennis courts.
Yeah, it, it just looked like the jetty that comes up splits between the path and the soccer field as well. So I wasn't sure if that's considered part of it.
Well, the very, if you look at the dry and the very far north end of it, if you're looking at it.
Yeah.
Very far north end, all that is is a swale. There's a swale that, that brings channels of water back.
Right, but, but the park staff mow that when they're doing regular.
We mow it all the time.
Okay, and then my, my second question is when I look at the map on the website of the geographic, what homes are included in SSA ten? Um, they end at basically, if you did a line down Centennial to the right, and you kind of went up through that swale area you talked about. So to the, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say right, to the east of that area. Yet we just did a big project on Highland Avenue. And all of the homes on the left side of that that aren't in that SSA drain stormwater into unit two, but they're not included in the cost. And I think in our last discussion, we talked about the fact that an SSA should pay for the maintenance of those that benefit from it. However, I think we have specific stormwater systems for a lot of the homes on the other side that specifically go into this SSA. Am I, are into these units?
That would have, Tim, Tim would be best to answer that, because while Highland was redone to alleviate it, most of that stormwater goes elsewhere. Very little goes into, into this.
I thought our whole project was to have it go into.
Just the, just the overflow goes into the ponds. The majority of it goes in the direction. Exactly, it's just. And that's where, what we discussed two weeks ago. Tim explained that two weeks ago.
Mr. Paulson on the.
Yes, he's there.
Can, can he?
Yeah, so, I mean, the Highland Avenue storm sewer, that storm sewer, uh, goes south on Centennial. And what we did, because it's, um, is we provided a, a small relief storm sewer um, to take some of the pressure off of the existing syst- undersized capacity at Highland that does then go into that, uh, large wetland pond area, uh, adjacent to the unit two, uh, symbol on the, uh, on the exhibit there. So, um, yeah, the majority of that stormwater and stormwater, except in extreme events, is going to go down since the Centennial Storm Sewer.
Actually, Kelly, I can, I can send you the engineering drawings.
Well, no, I, I remember the project. I just know that there is stormwater systems that tie into that for areas that are not within that geographic system. So that's, I, I just realized that when I started looking at where that geographic SSA area is. Uh, so I appreciate Mr. Paulson for his explanation.
Any other questions about SSA number ten? Or these graphics, is there a break? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for SSA number ten. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Okay, we'll now entertain a motion to open up a public hearing for the levy of SSA number eleven.
Number one.
Number one.
Second.
Okay, so second and third. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor, say aye? Uh, both same sign? Okay, now we're all in here at this wonderful public hearing. Welcome, Ms. Lyons.
Yes, thank you. Um, special service area number eleven is Hampshire Highlands. Um, total acreage sixteen point zero five acres are mowed. Um, I guess I don't have the total acres, but that's just a pun of mowing. Um, we spend a lot of labor, uh, in this particular SSA. I apologize, I don't have a total area of, um, the, uh, SSA. Um, there are two hundred and fourteen parcels excluding exempt properties, which include the village-owned, um, stormwater facilities that, um, we take care of. Um, so I don't have the same fancy map, but this one actually almost came out better. Um.
It looks good.
Uh, the pond down at the bottom of the, uh, the slide is that that, um, has, uh, Bailey on the left or the west and then the tiny pond up, um, at the top of the, of the slide. This particular SSA is in, um, very good shape. Uh, this is a five percent increase, so we're holding a public hearing. Um, and we're planning for, um, some, uh, as you can see, uh, the ponds are really large and the burning, uh, is expensive. So, um, we are, uh, raising the levy amount by one thousand dollars. Um, we do end in the positive, but in this particular case, um, we have, uh, some potential, uh, burning and, um, other things that will, uh, use up that fund balance in future years. So we're just raising it one thousand dollars. There are, um, as I mentioned, two hundred and fourteen property owners in this particular SSA. Um, and if we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar owner occupied home, this would be a forty-two, almost forty-three dollar, um, tax on their bill. I, I did, I did want to tell you too, in fiscal year twenty-one, we were doing some catch-up, um, in preparation for some clearing and, uh, residents at the same, at the, the tax rate that was taxed and the same two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, fair market value of a home, they were being taxed seventy-one dollars. So despite raising it five percent and, um, a thousand dollars, it's still, um, nearly thirty dollars less than it was in fiscal year.
Anything I could just do one, just go to, just going back to the map and stuff and kind of going into who's a part of it. Um, because at the very top, let's, make sure we do it better. It looks like it's, it's, it's Channing.
Yes.
On the north side, and then Johnson. And so those, just the parcels that we see, other ones are paying in, that would be Channing, but not Johnson.
There's kind of, I mean, there's almost overlap, right? So to the extent that, um, White Oak Ponds is shown on here, um, they are not included in this SSA. So, um, I didn't blackout properties that were not included.
No, I was just curious, because it's a part of this, one is part of a screen. So part of Johnson is in it, but not the full amount of Johnson in it.
Um, no, I'm sure that the entire amount of Johnson.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
Part is in ten, part is in.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns about SSA number eleven? Or the opposing tax level? Okay, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for SSA number eleven. Questions, comments?
You get the first.
I got them.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back in open session here. Welcome, everybody. Um, next, we have a motion to approve the use of a consent agenda for items nine, eight, nine, eight through I, which our ordinance is twenty-two, uh, or twenty-two dash thirty-seven through forty-five.
Second.
Okay, now, before we proceed with this, does anybody want any of these items removed from the consent agenda?
I would like to.
All right, so I think that we have a, we have, somebody has to withdraw the motion now because of debate. Um, so. So why don't we amend, so would the original motion maker like to amend?
I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. Okay. So we will vote on item A individually. The consent agenda will be in place for the SSAs. We're on the same page, everyone? Okay, so we have first, a second? Can you, uh, well, we don't need to do a roll call, but that do. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, perfect. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-seven for the annual tax levy. Second. Questions, comments or discussion on the tax levy?
Please repeat that.
Questions or comments on the tax levy?
Please repeat what you, what you said.
Uh, before the, for the. Twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
That is uh eliminating the ordinance or the annual tax levy?
Oh, it's a vote on item A.
It's a vote on item A.
Page twenty-eight.
Got you.
Sorry.
There's no numbers on these.
Oh.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, so we, we have a first and a second for approving the ordinance or the ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-seven, which is an ordinance for approval of the annual tax levy. Is there any questions, comments, discussion? Alright, now this one, I think we need a roll call vote for, correct? Yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the vote? Oh, wait.
Just hold on a second. On page eleven of it, one says, uh, let's see, the first, the first where as says a sum of sixteen million, nine hundred seventy-five, and then uses in parentheses fourteen million, nine hundred seven. So just wanted to make sure which one it was.
That's a scribbler's error, it should be the sixteen.
It should be the sixteen in the bottom, okay. So that was correct. Thank you.
So I have a first and a second, with the understanding that the scribbler's error will be corrected, would be the correct amount?
Yep.
Mr. Deputy Clerk? Ms. Paul Strain?
Aye.
Sir Robinson? Aye. Ms. Thor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly? Alright, Mr. Coth, alright, Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Now I would like to uh have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which will approve the ordinances twenty-two dash thirty-eight through twenty-two dash forty-five.
Sum up.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Anderson? Aye. Ms. Thor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Coth?
No.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strain?
Aye.
Those pass forward to. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, Mr. Hedges? This is the longest you've ever had to wait for a village manager's report.
Two hours. At this time, Mr. Ma- um, Mr. Mayor would ask for a motion to accept the Department of Justice at way twenty twenty-two, law enforcement, the escalation grant awarding amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand and, and dollars fifty cents. Yeah, before you enter the second one, Chief Anne explaining just this grant that you have received and all we're doing is accepting money this time. It's pretty straightforward. Chief?
So this great, so this uh, this grant is a, a escalation grant to the Department of Justice that um that actually Lieutenant Jones applied for um while he was still here over the summer. Uh, what this grant is for is for the purchase of a Virtua three hundred simulator. Um, it's a, this is a three hundred degree training simulator that immerses the officers in a in basically virtual reality um environment where their, their armed with um, with the arms, the weapons that they carry on the street. Um, and then this, as the scenarios roll through, there, uh, the scenarios can be changed um in real time, so depending on how the officers interacting with the scenario, the person running it can change that, that scenario and um make it, and make it um the person in the video reacting to how the officer is actually. So what this is going to allow us to do is there's, there's a lot of training mandates that um that came out last year um related to use of force, so there's um twenty-four hours of mandatory training that the officers have to undergo every three years. And um, this will allow us to do all of that training in-house. And, and it's also going to allow us to train with other departments and we're going to, um, part of the grant is to partner with um Gilberts and Pindbury and Hurley and all of the District Three Hundred SROs to conduct the training um at our station. So we'll have them come in and, and, but they're also, and they're also going to um, as, as it goes down the road for um the maintenance, the annual maintenance cost for this is twenty thousand dollars. And um, we have the first two years covered in the grant, and then after that, um, yeah, well, whatever agencies are using it, we're going to ask them to that actually committed to uh, uh, how offset their expense. Um, so this will, uh, once we get this system installed, it will help us to meet all the mandates and we have to meet up three years plus to be able to go over and about that. The officers will be able to come in during a shift and do, you know, one or two scenarios and then go back out on the street instead of tying them up for an eight-hour course. They'll be able to pop it, you know, get it knocked out a little bit at a time. Uh, throughout, throughout the period. Any other questions about that?
I just have one question on the, I see the estimate for the build-out. Is that what we're looking at, right?
That's the next step.
Thanks, I'm under the chance. We just, I mean, if you want to talk, if you'd like to. If you would like.
I was just curious if, if there was more than one bidder. I, I, I don't know that much, it, it should go out for public bid.
No, there, we, we had two quotes. Yes, and this was actually done by the owner of the building, so it's a part into the estimates himself with Doug's.
These are the contracts he wanted to allow in his space, so it's a little bit different of a scenario because we don't own the building, is that correct?
Yes.
And those bits were actually secured before, before I can import them.
This was part of the lease, correct? Like, if we do the lease, or lease.
When we renewed the lease, we said that we would come back with final numbers because we didn't have the, the estimates yet. And now that we are.
Well, the confusing part to me is right at the very top, it says to be done at prevailing wage. If the village has no skin in the game, if they don't have to do prevailing wage, they can hire ten guys from home, be, both stand out front.
We determined that since we're going to occupy the building, we should pay prevailing wage, that was accurate.
So specific to the training, this sounds like a great thing to make sure we meet requirements, and it sounds like there will be mandates, I should say, regulations that the officers will have to do so much time simulator to meet the requirements. What, and I know you were mentioning it, how many of these exist in the area and how will this help to make a positive impact in the surrounding community?
There's, there's not a Virtua three hundred simulator in your area. It's actually an amazing opportunity to be able to have that here.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, that's part of the whole plan is to bring in all those other agencies and work together with them, um, train with them, and then be able to use this simulator to improve the, the training in the whole area. You know, the others, the other departments in the area are the same hope that we are as far as staffing and being able to um, conduct that training on a regular basis.
If I could ask them too, is you said there's no other one, this, you know, side down the B three hundred anywhere in the area, so like if someone from Alpro Village, there's no one that they could run to someplace else?
This, this particular, the Virtua three hundred, there's, I, I'm not familiar with any there in the, in the region.
Okay.
There might be some, there might be one really close to the city. Um, I know in um St. Charles, there's a, there's one that's like half, it's a ver- it's a Virtua one eighty, I think. Um, but the, the three hundred where they actually wraps around the officer, um, it's, this is the only one.
If, if we, because I'm, I'm looking at payment, I'm looking at, you know, upkeep, et cetera, and the four or five agencies that you said, and they're gonna all help with that maintenance. If another department asks to, to use it then, do we will we, would we allow that? So that's question one, is would we allow other agencies that are twenty-five, thirty miles away to ask about using it? And then two is, do we charge for that, then, or is there some kind of a fee?
Well, I, right. I don't know that.
You're renting the space, you're right.
The, this the people, you have to be certified to operate the simulator.
Yes.
And so initially, the only people that would be certified to operate the simulator would be um probably two or three people from our police department and then and then individual, at least individual represent, representatives from each one of these other agencies, so they can come in and use it without, without us being there. You know, if, if an agency that was twenty-five miles away wanted to come and use it, I would be open to that, but we're not going to use our staffing to to run the simulator and, you know, we're not going to commit all that because it would either be an officer off the street that would be doing it, or an officer on overtime.
Yeah.
And if we were going to do that, I certainly would want to build that back to that agency.
So even like a user fee for that officer's time and the training.
Do you? On that thought though, is, again, I think that this provides a lot of great opportunity for surrounding. Please work for this. Do you have, to be certified, do you have to be a sworn officer?
I guess I don't want to answer that question.
He means as an operator? That's what I mean, just as the operator. That, that like runs the simulation machine.
Well, I don't see any reason why you would need to.
Because I wonder then if, after this is installed and you about, eh, you know, it's evaluated, how beneficial it is for the community, maybe we're something considering uh, at least a part-time employee that is certified on that to allow for jurisdictions that may not have somebody in their unit certified, that they could, to that rental fee, it includes a staff member to run the simulation, gives them the training they need for the state rules and regulations. Just something to maybe consider down the road.
Sure, it, it would probably need to be a, um, would probably need to be a retired police officer or someone that was certified as a use of force instructor.
Understood, yeah, absolutely. I'm sure there'd be other certifications and things to happen.
We happen to know a recently retired police officer. It said that if there was any role that you can go within the village.
We have a lot to learn here. We have to get this installed, it's going to be a couple of years before we're, we reach out that far.
Okay. Okay, I, to add then, you know, helping other agencies, because we always want to be there. Uh, good for our other agencies, but um colleges, honestly, we've got some very big colleges here that have the justice programs, and I've actually been able to use some of these use of force and these training modules, which is amazing, but to get students that are trained to be police officers in there to kind of really understand that adrenaline um is excellent. So partnering, for the village to partner with or to operate to like once in order to, to Alogen Community College where there's just, you know, other students receiving. Uh, just something to think about, because honestly, it was amazing and it got the students there to talk to and interact with the police department, which was really helpful. So, just something to think about.
Um, since we started talking about the build-out, um, just to kind of keep things consistent, does anybody have any questions about said build-out?
I, I'm in alignment with trustee most question about the vote. I mean, if we're going to say, and I'm not disagreeing with this, since it is kind of, I shouldn't say kind of, since it is work for the municipality, that prevailing wage makes sense, that's the law. I also think that it should make sense that we follow all of the stipulations, which mandates that we go out to bid for these things, which were over to over twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So that, that's my concern here. I don't have a concern with it, with the per, the, the company that did submit it. I just have a concern that we did vote. Um, in the past, we've asked the board to waive the bidding requirements for purchase of vehicles and any purchase of like.
Not a construction when you get prevailing wage.
That's the problem, if that's the case, then you should vote no on this, and I have to go up.
Well, come on, rather than voting no on it, let's take the temperature of the board and then we can withdraw.
That's what I mean, individuals.
So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I want to tell, um, when do we foresee the police department moving out of that building? Because if we're going to spend this amount of money to put this in, that's part A of the question, and part B is can it move and reinstall elsewhere without creating damage?
We just signed a five-year lease, so we're committed for five years, and absolutely can be. If, if the plan, in our capital plan, is to have a village hall and joint police department available in five years.
Hmm.
Uh, and we're, we're going to learn a lot more about that after a few weeks. Have our board best, we can have a guess. On several years.
Okay.
Uh, but uh, yes, at this time, we're committed to that space for five years.
So.
Are we, are we paying for this, or is the owner?
These costs will be amortized in the lease over the five-year period.
So that was going to be my question as well, because the, the grant is a new it's a great thing, it's a new thing that comes in. Does that grant just cover the unit itself, the training module, it doesn't cover the build-out at all?
Right. Now, the build-out was part of our application, so while it was not a match required, it probably can start.
Okay, but the grant is specific, like it covers a hundred percent of that, no more than what the cost of that.
A hundred percent to the penny.
Yeah, that's what I, yes, okay, so the grant is for that, yes.
So, and, and so if the owner is going to build this into the lease, we're essentially not paying for it. So it doesn't matter while we are in the rent.
Right, so my question is, my question is about that same, on that same amount. If we say, you know, we want to take this out to bid, cut, the property owner's already got it, we have an agreement in place to amortize this over the lease, is there a possibility that we say, okay, we want to do this different, you can say, fine, you guys pay for it on your own.
In this contract, you might have to hire that stuff. So guaranteed that the price will be any more.
Did you say that the builder, or the building owner had gotten multiple?
We worked with two different companies, or is, is I'm the word? Do we have access to what the other bid was from the other company? I don't have any.
It's up to the board. I, I just, you have to keep in mind that, that it's, the, the property owners agreed to shoulder this burden for us, they amortized it over the lease. That was part of the negotiations of a, of the lease agreement. So the board, the flavor of the board is to say, let's go out to bid with this, and for our process, even though this is a little bit of a different situation, we can certainly entertain a motion to withdraw it, go out to bid, and then we'd have to renegotiate with the property as far as I'm understanding.
Well, he would probably allow us to amortize it, any amount over five years. He, he would be lending us more or less money. He's basically lending us money upfront. If we pay for it, then we'll retire at five percent over there. Five, five percent.
Five percent.
So he's paying for it first, I mean, so it's coming out of his pocket. And then we're going to be slowly paying it over five years in rent. It's his property. He could have said no. Um, I really think that at this point, we have negotiated with the landlord. We set up our five-year lease with them based on this. Um, you know, obviously, he's trying to get a good reputable builder because it's his property, and in five years, we are gone. Um, I, I, I think we've, we've done everything proper at this point, and I'm comfortable just leaving it the way it is and continuing.
Let, let me ask you a question. Is the contract between the, the company bidding the job between them and the building owner?
Yes.
So there is no village signature on any of this. It is not our contract, it's basically the building owner's.
So we don't have a say-so anyway, so.
Well, the only say-so apparent that we had was because we were occupying the space, we had to enforce that they were doing prevailing.
According to that, that's just safe.
You can't do that.
But I think, what
the village is actually paying to do it over time.
Through rent. So how, how is that legal for somebody renting an apartment to make stipulations on the owner? You can't do that.
Can I, are there any leases you want? It's negotiable. But I, I, I mean, what are you asking? What, what is the village demanding that the owner do?
I don't think the village uh can demand the owner. The owner owns the building, he can build out however he wants it. Right?
He's agreed to that about him, that's the point is.
Yeah, we can't, we can't say, hey, you've got to have a, a prevailing wage contractor or following.
Well, I think the, I think the state, I mean, I know. Well, go ahead, no, you're, you're the attorney, you can answer.
Well, we need to be cautious about that, so that the state does not criticize the village for paying for improvements that were not done at prevailing wage because they're severe penalties.
So, sorry, I'm not, I'm asking too many basic questions, I apologize. Um, looking at our budget this year to date, where it's estimated that we will have that by the end of the year, whether surplus or deficit. Is it still thought that the best move is to amortize this over five years as a part of the lease? Or is there the possibility of surplus funds to just cover this upfront? And reduce future lease costs over the next four years rather than amortizing?
I'll let Miss Mike's um dress up, I would say I would be uncomfortable spending roughly five thousand dollars at some budget right now without knowing for sure.
Um, so you don't have the advantage of seeing the financials in your packet this, this particular um meeting, but we will review that in Jan- uh November financials in January. Um, uh, at this point, uh, our income tax revenues are uh well exceeding our expectations and um, while Jay probably isn't a hundred percent comfortable, I am like really conservative, and I feel like this is not, it, it is an unbudgeted item. So I was not aware of the grant on the, on the revenue side, and I was not aware of the expenses on the expense side. This project is not in budget. However, um, at the amount given, I, I feel like we probably could do that.
And that could be a decision after an approval that we go back to.
And that could be a decision after approval that we go back to the building owner and say, we actually like to pay for this upfront, or is that not?
We could do that. But I, I just want to caution you. We're gonna talk a lot about this, like we're gonna spend eight hours on Monday forecasting some session, because the income tax in Illinois is really, really exceeding budget forecast. The whole state is concerned about this. The United States is concerned about it. But this, this economic time that we're in can turn very fast. The housing market is real.
Well, and that's why I'm asking.
While we're having a lot to say that our income tax is well over budget now, it may not be by the end of the year.
That, that I understand, but that's one of the reasons why I'm asking about the possibility of paying for this when we would have the funds, should we have an economic change where it may be tougher to absorb that in future years, because we may not have as much tax.
Trustee Kelly, if we have that extra money, why don't we do the ponds, get it overdone with instead of burdening our taxpayers year after year after year? We're looking at thirty, forty, fifty grand in ton removal. If you've got eighty-five grand to spend, why don't we do the ponds and not burden people's taxes?
I'm not disagreeing with that sentiment. I was just in reference to the current thing that we're talking about. I just wasn't sure, because I, it was the same, we're on that same thought pattern, but mine was more of a, rather than looking down the road and then wondering, gosh, we need to find a way to fund additional costs throughout the budget. Could we future-proof by paying for it upfront? It sounds like we're just not sure. We have differing opinions on what that may be, but okay. That's helpful. I appreciate it.
The answer is yes. We could, I'm sure that the landlords would renegotiate the lease and take the lead out of it. Just have us do it directly. At this point, we felt like it would be less of a burden to spread over five years.
Okay.
Which is very, very common for any system like this. It was also done in the originals.
And I just want to jump in too, because we have all these, you know, projects that we'd love to do that measure fifteen million dollars or so. And so this one is not budgeted and coming up on to raise it to the very top and pay it all off. I don't think that would be profitable with all of this that we already have. The gift of this, you know, training device is phenomenal and it's almost forty million dollars. So the eighty thousand or so to do the rest of it is really minimal, especially the fact that it's going over years. It's a gift, I think, from the landlord that allows us to do it so that we don't have to go to a bank or someplace else to do it, so.
Who was the other bid? God, I bet myself as well that I don't recall. Not a local, it was not a local company.
So what do we think, guys? Leave it in or take it out?
Leave it in. I'm uncomfortable with it. But I understand the balance of trying to predict the future versus respecting taxpayer dollars.
Trustee both.
We've spent a long time here cleaning up items for a long time. I will say, okay, but let's not let it happen again. Period. We've cleaned up so many past issues on this board, and here we're stuck at another one. Let's not do this again. If they're gonna pay prevailing wage, then either go out for bid or go get another bid and bring it. But we just spent twenty minutes on something that was unnecessary.
The landlord could do it without prevailing wage, correct? It's his building. He's doing.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because prevailing wage covers public works and improvements that are paid for or financed by the public body. And this lease directly calls for amortization of this improvement over a five-year period. That sounds an awful lot like financing.
That's, that's.
So, and again, there are penalties in prevailing wage act, which you don't want to be sitting here here from now talking about that. I don't think, but again, your decision.
So that's our way, I mean.
My analysis is not financing part of the asset.
Do you know the Illinois Department of Labor rules forbidding purposes, anything over twenty-five grand, you must go out for public bid, three bids, correct?
Right.
That is correct. Okay, so we didn't do that. So all I'm saying is, I'm okay with this. Let's not do it again. Period.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not comfortable with you. For this, at this point, we have three trustees at least that are comfortable. I'm comfortable in that.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
This is not time-sensitive matter, but I'd like to just withdraw. We're, we're not even on that point yet.
I'll entertain a motion to withdraw item B from the village managers or board. Hold on, sorry.
I just have a question before. Because there's two different things we've combined in one conversation. First one that we're on right now is on accepting.
Yeah.
But the second one is, is on the build out. Recommendation is on the build out. Is, there's no effect on, on tabling the build out on a grant itself? Okay, I just want to make sure.
I wouldn't have asked for that.
Okay, and was there a plan with this on, what was the timeline? If this, this was considered tonight, what was the timeline?
We didn't have this.
It's not. Okay, so we're not delaying a timeline.
About this, I have no responsibility. We should have, we should have did this, and we will. Or I should have asked you to waive the bidding requirements, which I did.
Okay, I just want to make sure we understand what the downstream effects that you have.
We don't impact at all.
Okay.
Can I throw in then too about interest rates then? Because this bid is based on the time we have right now, how much it's gonna cost. So if we rebid this and go through, this could be significantly higher.
We will be following the state law, right? Thanks, Mark.
Thanks. So let's start with a motion to approve the Department of Justice de-escalation grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-ten dollars and fifty-three cents.
Oh, okay.
Questions, comments, concerns?
That's to accept it.
Correct. Just the grant.
Just accept.
Mr. Deputy Attorney, call roll please.
Mr. Robinson, hi. Ms. Butler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Robb.
Hi.
Ms. Bowstring.
Hi.
Ms. Patsy, here.
Okay, so.
Just table that, please.
And I have a motion to table item B in the village manager's report for the construction costs. Questions, comments, concerns? Call in favor. Close.
Okay, now, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I'd like to have Chief Pan to do a presentation on the Safety Act. Okay, so I know that there's been a lot of concern. I've had a lot of concern about the Safety Act and the changes that were coming on January first. And there was a trailer bill that passed a couple of weeks ago that made changes to the original, to the original pre-trial fairness act. It's part of the, part of the larger Safety Act. And I think that it's much more palatable now. I've been in several meetings with regional law enforcement and with State's Attorney Moyer. And I think that we're in a much better place now than we were. That's, that's my overall message to the board for tonight. But I just wanted to go over some basic changes that have taken place. The, there's, there's a significant change in language with body worn cameras. Our village will be required to implement body worn cameras by January first, twenty-twenty-five. My recommendation would be we do it much sooner, as soon as we can get it financed, so we can work out the case before we get to that time. And so the, there's all, there's a lot of clarifying language in this trailer bill that applies to things like when the officer should have the camera on, shut it off, and retention and all that. It's very detailed and very lengthy. But the, but really the main significant thing is they, they changed the language for the camera grant. And this, the camera grant is a, it's a Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board funded grant that is a, it's a rolling grant. Every year you can apply. I think it's like in March-ish that they open it up for applications. And it's pretty much a guaranteed grant, once you, once you apply. So we, so now we can use that grant to not only purchase cameras, but also purchase storage and offset that storage. Now, how that's gonna look going forward, I don't know. All that until probably they, they make a grant announcement in March or April. And it's not clarified in the, in the trailer bill as far as exactly how that's gonna look in the future. But they, they did make it so we could use it for, for storage, so that's. So one of the main concerns in the original Safety Act was that it made all, they did a very blanket language. And they, and basically what they said in the original act was all class B and C misdemeanors, which I'll give you some examples on the next slide, were citation only, which this is what drove the fear behind like the trespassing law, because that, because trespassing falls into this category. And it would only allow, it would have only allowed officers, the way that was originally written, to, to go to a trespassing complaint and write a ticket. And so we had no means to take that person into custody. You understand, if we make someone leave, if we force them to leave, we're arresting them, even if it's just to our squad cars. We're taking them into custody. So this trailer bill changes that. It makes the language much, much more broad. And it gives the officers the ability to arrest that person if the officer can articulate that this person is a threat to an individual, a threat to the community, or if we need to make an arrest to stop the behavior. So it really takes out all that, the fear that was behind the way the law was originally written. And I think there, there was good reason at that point for that fear, but now it's, it'll be, it'll be gone. It'll be something where we can take action when we're supposed to. And this is just a, or I should say when we need to. These are just some examples of class, class B misdemeanors and class C misdemeanors. So these are the laws that I'm talking about. This part. And, and some of these are really, you know, criminal trespass being one of the frequent ones that we would use. The simple assault and disorderly conduct, those are also ones that we frequently use as sort of catch-all offenses. And so if you, you know, if you have an incident where someone's really causing a disservice, disorderly conduct, we need appropriate charging. We need to be able to arrest someone if we can articulate the situation. And this law, the trailer bill will allow us to do that. So the next major thing, again, something that has really caused a lot of, a lot of concern about the Safety Act was this pre-trial release and the elimination of cash bail. The way that they changed the, the law in the trailer bill, again, fixes many of the concerns that they had and, you know, that everyone has had about it. And that, that main concern being that unless it's a very high-level violent offense, that the person would just be let out and be back on the street. And there was a, there was a provision in that original bill that said that, that there had to be clear and convincing evidence that this person would be a threat to a specific individual, or they had to release. So we're, we're talking about some pretty serious offenses here, like burglary and most of the violent, even violent crimes, if they could improve that that person was an ongoing threat under clear and convincing, then the judge would have had to release that person. The way that this safety or that this trailer bill is written, it, it boils it down to articulable facts of the case to show that this person would be a, a threat to the community, a person or an individual. I mean, a group of persons or an individual. So goes from clear and convincing, and I think you got that, it goes from clear and convincing in, in the, or clear and present, I guess, in the, in the Safety Act to now this trailer bill says a real and present threat to the safety of any person or persons or the community based on applicable facts. So through eliminating cash bail, what, what they're doing with this trailer bill is it's going to go, it's gonna be very similar to what we have now with the cash bail, bail system. You know, with the cash bail system, if you had two people arrested for burglary and, and they were both lodged in jail with the same bond. You know, if the bond was ten thousand dollars, the person that could come up with a thousand dollars to get out, could get out. The other person couldn't get out, and they could sit there for months. That's what I think what the, the main focus of the trail, of the Safety Act of this eliminate, elimination of cash bail was to eliminate that discrepancy or disparity. So what would happen with the cash bail system is, you know, when that, when that person would come in for that initial hearing, a judge would set the bill, and it would either be very high or very low. Well, the way that this is worded, that, that same judge is going to hear that case, and they're just gonna be able to decide whether they have, whether they are gonna detain that person or they're gonna let it go. It's really the same thing. It's just that now the person will never have to post cash. So the, the way it's written, I think it's gonna allow us to, to be able to do our jobs effectively as a criminal justice system. And really, the burden of this, of the changes now with the pre-trial fairness act fall mostly on the State's Attorney's Office and the court system. So that, you know, it is much, it's gonna, it is gonna be more cumbersome for them. That one of the main things that is gonna be cumbersome is, is this immediacy of a twenty-four-hour period to get that person in front of a judge to have a hearing, and that applies seven days a week. Kane County has decided they're not going to hold hearings on Saturday. Why Saturday? Not sure. But they will hold hearings on Sunday, so as far as our village, there's gonna be times when officers will be required to testify at a hearing on a Sunday afternoon or Sunday morning. Now, the other thing related to that that they changed with this trailer bill is the original bill required an in-person hearing. This trailer bill now will allow those hearings to take place virtually. So, you know, the officers will be able to, if they're comfortable, they, they may be able to even do these hearings from home, or they could come into the police station, do the hearing, you know, in our cooking area, the police station. So there's a lot of positive changes, and I, I think that law enforcement statewide is much more comfortable with this act the way it stands now. Even though, you know, the, well, the Illinois Chiefs of Police, they're, they're neutral on it at this point. After this trailer bill passed, they're just remaining a neutral position. They're either supporting it on the Safety Act, so. They're neither supporting it or attacking it. They're just saying, okay, you know, we're, we're going to make this happen the way it stands. And we don't have any, you know, significant objections at this point. So we are also holding a training, a regional training here on December twenty-first. State's Attorney Moyer is coming up here, and we've got a room out at the, since the schools are gonna be out. We have a room up at Big Timber Elementary that we are going to, we invited the regional agencies in to, to meet with her, with us. And then she's gonna give her, her presentation. And I waited till December twenty-first. I got this on the calendar about two months ago. And I wanted to wait till December twenty-first because I knew this trailer bill was gonna come. And I didn't want us to get a whole bunch of information and then have to come back two or three weeks later and change everything. So I'm sure she'll be really articulating the process and how it's gonna work when we're arresting people. So what questions do you have?
Is that training here today?
Yes. It's at three o'clock.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
I was gonna say, because they're still in school.
Yeah.
So.
But they'll be, no, it's available.
Okay, good. I was confused, because I was like, no, my kids are in school.
Can I, just one clarification question.
Yes.
Is that you, from what the old, it's the last Safety Act before they amended it, was requiring it to be a full-blown bond hearing, that it was kind of like a one-shot at the apple. And prosecutors had to, they couldn't just have a line prosecutor. They had someone that really was gonna present everything it wants. And a lot of times, you don't have those tests and stuff done.
That's, it's, it's still.
That's still, so that's why State's Attorney.
And they have the ability to have a defense attorney there too, which passed preliminary hearings. You didn't have a defense attorney. So that's, that is still something that they're gonna have to work out, the State's Attorney.
And the question then too is, is currently the way it is for bond hearings, do our officers have to go to bond court then?
Typically, typically no.
Okay, but now they would have to.
Yep.
That's the additional expense.
Yes.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions for Chief Pan on the Safety Act? State's Attorney Moser from Kane County has done a whole bunch of videos online, done a lot of interviews. I attended the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Meeting in Rosemont this Monday. She presented to all the people in attendance from all the different communities in the middle of Illinois here. people and tenants from all the different communities in the middle of Illinois here. And, um, every mayor that I spoke to, um, after JV spoke or State's Attorney Moser spoke, I was like, man, you guys are real lucky to have her on Kane County. She seems like she's really on top of this. So, um, I think she's done a really good job. If you haven't seen some presentations, they are available online. And I know Chief Pan has been really plugged into this conversation through our state's attorney's office and chief police, chief's association in Kane County. So thank you for saying this plugged in as you are to this. And thank you for giving this presentation tonight.
Yes.
Because I feel like, um, there's been a lot of press about this. I'm not going to say negative or positive. There's been a lot of press, a lot of discussion about this within the community and a lot, and a lot of concern. And so I think that, um, people just need to understand that this is going into effect on January 1st, whether they like it or not. And it seems like the people that are charged with enforcing this, um, are up to speed on what the rules and regulations are. I appreciate that.
I, I do have one question. It builds back, maybe it was the first, my first year as a trustee. We passed something where Mr. Schuster, you represent for us in many cases, so officers don't have to go to court. I thought we had passed something like that that you could represent to minimize the amount of officers that had to go to court. Does this affect any of that or am I thinking of a, you're in-house, you're in-house?
Well, I'm not sure what.
I, I think you represent.
I prosecute the traffic citations and ordinance violations in the local circuit court. Uh, those are not felonies or class A or class B misdemeanors. So.
So this doesn't have any effect of increasing officer need to be in any of that type of.
That's correct. It does not. This, uh, this puts a burden on, the state's attorney has to be ready for everybody who was arrested last night by 10 o'clock the next morning. And if she wants to hold somebody, if she wants a judge to hold somebody, my understanding that, that gets put over to one o'clock. So that's why the chief mentioned afternoons. But I don't, the officers don't need to be there in the morning for the necessary. But if it's held over and it's going to be contested, I think that's when they'll get called in.
Plus they don't have any reports related to that case. So by.
Right. Everybody's got the, the processes, so immediate, uh, papers got to fly. And you have to deliver, uh, prisoners from, from a holding cell here to Geneva by 7:30.
Yeah.
So there's, there's side effects that are still being.
There's still, and we're still ironing that out. That's, that's what I've been waiting to see what she has to say on the 21st. Attorney Schuster, do you have anything that you'd like to add, uh, the safety act or your hearing?
No, no, I think those are the basics and, and again, it'll get smoothed out once, but the start is going to be rough because it's, it's so immediate that everybody has to be on their toes and ready to go, get the paper, get the people there.
No.
So.
No, I don't, maybe you covered this, maybe not. I was trying to keep up. Um, one of the things that, uh, the state's attorney said on Monday was that, um, there's a provision in there that says that everybody that's in prison now has what, 90 or 60?
Well, jail. 60 days, 60 days to file. Well, they, when they, yeah, 60 days to file, they can file for a motion to, for a hearing to be released, um, and that hearing has to take place within 60. And it's everybody that's in jail. Period.
After six, yeah, after they file, they have 60.
Yeah.
But is that primarily because they may not have been able to come up with bail?
Right.
Okay.
So, so to that point, it's not that if you're in jail, right? If I don't get terminology right. January 1st comes, they open up the door, you're free to hit the streets because you have an trial. You have to, you're in jail and for up to 60 days until you, until after you apply for that hearing to find out if you can get out.
Yes.
Is, is it your understanding that 60 days is to allow them time to process all of that?
And so, well, I'm very transparent about the fact that, that they're going, the state's attorney's office throughout the state are going to be flooded.
Yes.
And so that's why they gave them that 60-day grace period, if you will, so that they could process all of it.
Because there are many, many, many people being held because of a lack of cash while they have a trial.
But I, I just, I thought that was important. And if you brought that up and covered it, I apologize.
I actually did.
But I thought, I thought that that was important because that's one of the things I've heard over and over is that on January 1st, the doors are going to open and you plug in all these criminals and all this other stuff. That's, that is not absolutely not the case.
And point of order, they're not a criminal.
I, I, I understand.
I'm just pointing it out, you know, so it's on the official record as well.
I mean, for my.
An accused.
I, I'm not disputing. Does the new safety act apply to arrests starting January 1st? Or if you were to arrest somebody on December 31st and they're in your holding cell, so does the, do they fall under this on January 1st?
No.
So it's arrests starting January 1st. If they're, if somebody is arrested prior to that, they have that 60-day or that application and then up to 60 days consideration. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm just trying to understand. It's like, there's a lot of law that go right into effect. Did it affect things before, after? Okay.
I would assume that, that they're, they're going to have to iron it out if they get arrested, you know, like 10 minutes before midnight. We'll see what happens. But.
Yeah.
It's supposed, they're supposed to fall under the old system up until January.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you very much.
Just thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Really appreciate this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time we'd ask your consideration of a resolution about this region compact. You'd have your packet, regular boarding packet, agenda supplement. Josh and I attended a, um, mayor's caucus, uh, Chicago mayor's caucus, metropolitan mayor's caucus, uh, two weeks ago. And we learned about this program among other programs. Uh, this came up with the PR committee, uh, last week. We discussed it and the PR committee suggested that we bring this to the consideration. Uh, this is just an endorsement. It's not, it's nothing, it's not commensurate to anything. But there are, as you can see, majority of Chicago metropolitan area has joined us. And, uh, there are, what is it, 12, 14, uh, communities just here in Kane County alone. So with that, we guess your consideration.
And again, this kind of goes hand in hand with the, uh, grant that we did one through the state for the EV readiness. Um, so I think it's a, it's a good step and a good sign. So, um, I would like to, uh, have a motion to approve resolution 22 dash 20, adopting the greatest region. Questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the role please? Ms. Paul.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Mont.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
No.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Pass, five. Thank you. That, Mr. Mayor, we'd ask your consideration of a motion to authorize staff to buy insurance coverage offered by Arthur J. Gallagher. Um, we have before you an agenda supplement from, uh, Ms. Lyons and, uh, she'll explain this briefly too.
Um, as you know, you evaluated our workers' compensation coverage, um, at the second meeting in November. Um, at that time, I kind of presented some, um, apples to apples or tried to because there were certain packages that had to be done as a group and others that could be done as workers' compensation only. So bottom line is, uh, nothing has changed since the last meeting. Um, we had, we had requested some assistance from, uh, Dave Valentine for a, um, outside of the Arthur J. Gallagher, um, quote, and he was able to do that for workers' compensation. That same company does not bundle workers' compensation and package insurance. Yet when we declined to do the workers' compensation with them, they, um, did not offer a quote for the package policies. So essentially it's Arthur J. Gallagher's recommendation that we remain with, um, Argonauts or Trident Insurance. Trident is the public portion of the Argonauts umbrella, um, with a premium increase of 8.7%, um, our premium for 2023, um, including cyber, which is a separate policy, or machinery, separate policy, and crime, also a separate policy, 119,250 dollars.
Questions, comments? Entertain a motion to authorize staff to buy insurance coverage offered by Arthur J. Gallagher.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the role please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Mont.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul.
Hi.
Ms. Pass, six zero.
Before you, you have the monthly engineering report and the police incident report. Um, Mr. Paulson is online as is, uh, Chief Pan is in the room here. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns about any other reports that are presented?
I have a question on the, uh, PEI report, on the engineering report. Mr. Paulson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, the demo of existing well and treatment facilities starting the week of 12/12, what do we do when we demo a well where it's no longer needed? Do we fill in that space? What do we do to make sure it stays safe?
Yeah. We do make sure it stays safe. Uh, I, I, I don't know. I can't answer in detail, but there, there is a procedure uh, to safely, uh, abandon a well, uh, that is in our plans and specifications, which is not my area of expertise.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, I can provide you the details. I could pull the, uh, the documents and provide them to you if you'd like, but
there is a, a procedure, so.
This, this is the panelists.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Go make sure that. Anybody that's.
We gotta challenge you every now and then.
Understood.
I appreciate the, the honesty.
If he doesn't know the answer, we don't get charged for being.
I have one quick question for the Route 72 and State Street thing, um, because the utility work, everything is completed. Are they done putting the fences up around? Cause I, we see that there's a whole bunch of fences now and.
I can answer that. I'm, I'm involved in that project. Yes, the fences are all completed. The only things that are not completed are the streetlights and the city.
Okay. I haven't looked at it really closely, but it just, it seemed like there was all this area where water was going to go, but there was no fence. Right. Everything's complete. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineering report or the police firm report? Or Chief Pan, would you like to add anything to your report?
Uh, the only thing I'll, I'll add is that if you, it looks a little bit different. Um, I, I included the, uh, the citation count that I did last month and then the next page there has, um, or the next several pages, it's, it's the report that you've always seen. However, this one reflects the month by month. So you can see how we're doing compared to, to the month before or even, you know, any month throughout the year with each one's offenses. Um, so all the same offenses that you saw before, just broken down by month. Um, yeah. And other than that, it's, it's the same. Now I did, last month I did have the, um, the, uh, neighbors, um, crime data from the FBI that we submit every month. And this month it wasn't available because we had some, we had some problems with our November, um, reports that we're still ironing out. So I was needing to give, to finalize, um, to get submitted. So I don't, I just couldn't produce that report at this point.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much for the committee reports and your inputs, Chief and Mr. Paulson. Uh, next we have the accounts payable to personnel in the amount of 179 dollars and 99 cents. Do we have any questions about said expenditure? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable, uh, to personnel and the amount of 179 dollars and 99 cents.
No move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the role?
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Mont.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul.
Hi.
Ms. Kelly. All right. Ms. Pass.
Next we have the big one. Do we have any questions? Mr. Mont. I was calling, I was calling.
Appreciate you being somebody else.
He looked at me like, why are you calling? I mean, I didn't do anything to you.
Uh, you know, I, I will ask a question for you then. On, on page five of the report, I just, and it's just a clarification, the streetlights and the snowflakes, that was, um, I thought was paid partially by a grant or something from.
I'm in.
Snowflakes were.
Snowflakes were.
So then.
A portion of them were. Four hundred and fifty dollars were.
Okay. So then this bill reflects 2500 last.
Any other questions? They do look relaxed.
Yeah.
I love, feel like we have, this question is asked by somebody every time it comes on here. How long is our contract with Seagulls? The biggest attachment.
Thank you for asking. Actually, um, Seagulls was sold. And so this is our very last.
No way.
So there will no longer, so this is half of what we have received. So the village has recorded 60 plus thousand dollars in, in sales tax revenue. We will no longer have to share, but we also will not have the $30,000 in our revenue.
Cause that was a forever deal, right? As long as they exist.
It was. It went into, yeah, there was no end date for that.
Unless they ended for us, which they just did.
And why won't we, they're, they're closing down the answer.
Yeah, they're no longer going to have sales relation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I will entertain a motion to approve the regular amounts payable in the amount of quarter 77,550 dollars and 31 cents. Thank you, Mr. Mont. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the role?
Mr. Mont.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
And Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Ms. Pass, six zero.
Okay. Well, village board committee reports, BDC, you're up.
Uh, BDC met last night, had a great conversation around, uh, the survey results on prioritization for the economic development plan. The next phase is that the top results in each of the main theme categories are going to be collated. And, uh, they will be sent back out to the BDC members to then prioritize those top ones to come up with a list of top 10 recommendations for focus to go toward. It's, uh, it's not necessarily 10 new things. Many of them may be just continue. Recommendation is to continue. So, uh, making great progress and thanks to the, the entire board, the commission. Um, we did have the discussion on business density within geographic reasons, or regions. And I'm happy to share that when and should that become an agenda item on the village board agenda. To be back in BDC list. So at that time I will share that feedback. Um, and talked about some of the businesses come down, the, the facade grant, um, recipient updates. The, the cave is, um, pretty much done. There was, um, Will Swallow was going to look at the downspouts for the new, um, gutter system, just to check out the drainage part. But I think that was the last thing, Park and Straj's, that he was going to check out. Um.
That's.
Okay, great. Hampshire, Hampshire social is completed. Looks fantastic. If you have seen it, uh, you can stop by during the holiday celebration.
Coffee's good.
The, um. I don't know when their.
I thought it was. See any, well, they're going to be, what was the song? They're going to be open, uh, Saturday from like five to seven. Your sort of Christmas gifts, if you want to do some shopping or check it out, but they officially open in January. I think, I think they said January 10th. Don't quote me on that.
I don't think so.
I probably read that.
Um, the Garden Berry, uh, facade program is as complete as it will be to this point, um, because of weather and the cold. So they finished the, um, stone veneer as a lower three feet, all of the brick and the rest of the work will continue in the spring. Uh, and then there was, um, an ask of the beautification committee to keep the PR committee informed of expected dates when they're better known, uh, because that is one of the conditions of being able to, we ran a opening of the new State Street area. We had talked about that that needed, that building needed to be completed before we brought in the press and photography.
Oh, that's going to happen in the spring anyway. We're not going to be bringing people.
No, it was planned for the spring anyway, but that building construction will not start up until the spring. So it depends on when that will finish. Um, Mr. Edges, am I missing anything?
No.
That is all. I have any questions for BDC?
The cave.
Yeah. It does. I mean, the improvements they've done, they didn't have gutters before. Now it has gutters. It's a whole new roof. So they did a ton of work to it.
Public relations.
All right. Um, we had an awesome turnout on our snowplow naming contest with lots of submissions. They were terrific. And I have a few personal favorites, but I'm looking forward to all of them weekend tour clouds.
Very good fellows of age.
No, I'm just kidding. I could, um, we have, we've announced it already, right?
Yeah.
In a couple of places. Okay. So, um, Luke Snowplow.
Okay, so um Luke Snowpower, Darth Blader, the big Laplowski. Her whole flower. I'll make sure that goes right down on somebody's street over there. Okay, um Snow Course One, Sled Zeppelin, and um my personal favorite is your fluffy pants.
Are you serious?
That was the committee.
Wow.
I'd like to know the name of the driver.
Yeah, exactly. I would too, so I can.
I wonder who gets to drive. Should be in the next contest, who drives a little.
Yeah, that would be.
Mr. Sterd is going to make that decision.
That is awesome.
He accepts bribes as well from the staff in large on our bills.
That is awesome.
You're really good. It's okay.
I said from the stamp.
Read this kind of bill?
Yeah.
All right, um also app downloads are up. I would encourage people to continue to download the app. I mean, obviously not multiple copies, but it's a great way to be able to communicate directly with the village staff. You don't have to wait for village hours. You can just, you know, submit a problem, question, complaint, photo, get it taken care of. So it is awesome. Um we also decided that we would uh engage some services of where are they? Yeah, for the elders.
So we we have one that is going to help with social media advertising to increase awareness and reach of getting people to download the app and adoption of the app. And we have one for twins design work to promote the app throughout the community, whether it be through posters or.
How many downloads?
Seven hundred and twenty-four. Woo, it's up.
Yay.
It's up from even before we announced the snowplow, so that's great.
Although the reading is slow. Um Benzo.
PR, our public works.
No, no report. Wait for snow. Wait for snow to plow.
Are you.
There's, I know that.
Budget? New business or other announcements? I just want to thank everybody for participating, the staff of the Jingle Fest and Holiday Ed State. Was a big undertaking by everybody in Colorado, different organizations. Public Works killed it again. They did a great job. That break was well received. So that's, that was good. Santa, Santa, Santa has his normal list of ailments because of it. But Santa did really good.
Thank you to Santa, kids.
Yeah.
Love it. Thank you, Santa. You were the hit of the parade. And and that garbage truck.
We should, we should, we, we should from the village manager send something tonight.
Already called my.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was the coolest float in the whole thing.
Yeah.
I don't know. I thought. Put the lights on. I think the village trailer was pretty cool.
Eighteen hours they spent.
They didn't leave on for today's collections.
The kids loved it even on the rain. Um every single one.
It didn't rain all day and then it rained right before the parade, but that's.
Okay, and I wanted to.
I know.
And also the parade route was awesome because there were so many different residents who were inside their homes who would not have been able to come downtown necessarily. And so it was really nice to further engage with our community.
Can I give a shout out to the, all the kids of Hampshire? They had a packed place event at the Hampshire High School to watch the Hampshire basketball team compete against Huntley. We're so lucky on the basketball end, but the kids ended up donating over three thousand items of food and paper goods that were, they did a wonderful job. Good job, kids.
Okay. That's awesome. That is great. Um I don't want to rush things, but it's nine ten. We told Mr. Guy next, we beat on my nine, so I will create a motion.
So.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we go back into executives. Five minutes.